Okay, we're going in. I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, May 7th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have Board members Tim Polis, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Kinsing, Paula Cole, and I am Board Chair Christine Malik. We also have Superintendent Yunowski, and we do not at this time have our student representative, Matt Kipper. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds this evening as we work together. We will start with review and approval of the agenda. We do have one change on the agenda. Typically, bid awards have been in new business, so we would like to move bid award milk and bread to new business after lunch prices and before donations.
So we're moving it from the consent agenda?
Yes. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as amended?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Polis, second by Mr. Kinsing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So we will move on to information and proposals and non-action items. This is not a public comment meeting, but we will have public comment at the May 21st meeting. We start with reports and information from school sources and the superintendent update.
Alright, so as requested, we have an update from our Nutrition Services, and so I'm excited to present Director Pam Hupp to tell us about Nutrition Services and provide us an update. Pam?
Alright, and thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm going to try my best to keep it brief, because this weather is too nice. So we all have to rush outside and grab somebody's dog or something. But just as a reminder, Nutrition Services' mission statement, we just talked about the district mission statement, is to provide a variety of food choices to support our students in achieving their top performance at every level. And the strategies that my team uses to do that is to provide excellent customer service with all our interactions with our stakeholders, whether it's at after-school snack time, breakfast, lunch, summer feeding, to implement new products and recipes at all grade levels, to solicit student feedback, both formally and informally, and then to partner with all of the strategic plan and admin team to develop future goals to align with the strategic plan. And ultimately, we want to increase our program participation in all of our food programs and then develop, we're in the process also with the referendum being passed, of developing and incorporating into that a comprehensive plan for facility improvement. So, just a little review, and there's a lot of numbers and acronyms on the slides, so you gotta try to bear with me. But for school year 1617 is on the top, and then on the bottom is the year-to-date this school year of 1718, which is still in progress. So, the universal breakfast, the amount of universal breakfast that we served last year was just under 350,000, which was flat over the previous school year, very comparable to the previous school year's serving of breakfast. The lunches that were served was just 502,380,000, which was a slight decline, minus 5% over the previous year. And again, we started more comprehensive efforts with trying to engage in the negative lunch account balance process and procedure before implementing our new procedures. So that certainly had an impact on that. The fresh fruit and vegetable snacks that were served at that time in 1617 were at all elementary schools, so all four elementary schools, and that's for the entire year. In the 1718 year, we only have the fresh fruit and vegetable grant program at Centennial was the only site that was approved for that grant this school year. So that's the big difference in that. We did, I did apply for the fresh fruit and vegetable grant program for all four elementary schools, and the Minnesota Department of Education normally informs us, it's been later and later, but sometime right before Memorial Day weekend, on what schools actually are going to be approved for the program for next school year or not. And it all depends on actually a couple different things. The allocation that they receive from the USDA to fund the fresh fruit and vegetable snack program, and then the number of elementary schools in Minnesota that apply for the program, and what their current school, just school free and reduced percentage is. So those two factors do come into play, and so I personally have my fingers crossed and really hope that it would be great if we could, you know, get approved for all four of our schools again to implement the program. So I always like to think of the glass half-full, so I'm still thinking that way until I hear otherwise.
Pam, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Do you know how much it would cost to implement that if we don't get the grant approved?
Well, we looked into that last year, and it's broken out on a per cost, per day. And for example, at STEM school, just the grant itself was $43,000. So that was just one of the schools that we had that did not get the grant. So it was a lot of funding that we didn't receive. So for all three of the schools, if I'm remembering correctly, it was, I mean, it was over $110,000 to implement it at those three.
I was in the classroom when they brought them one time, and like the excitement of kids over fresh vegetables was kind of amazing to see.
No, it's...
All of them. The timing of it was very well put together.
It's a great program, so I'm hopeful. So the next thing is the after-school snack program, which is up on school year 1617. It's the federal snack program that we run at all of our sites, including the middle school and high school, and serve after-school snacks at all of the sites, and that was the amount of snacks that we served last year. Seven, just under 80,000 after-school snacks. So our ADP, which is our average daily participation based on our enrollment, and these are district-wide, these aren't school-specific, and these numbers on this slide. So at breakfast for last school year was 47.3, and then at lunch it was 68%. So on any given day, 68% of our enrollment is eating lunch with us. The elementary schools are always higher than the secondary schools, but it's still, it's still a good participation district-wide. And our free and reduced percentage last year was 62.3. And then looking at this year, just again, year-to-date, we did have the two snow days, which caused some of us afraid, a lot of us afraid, but with the missed revenue from those days. So, but we are catching up strongly actually in April and in last week, the first week of May. So at breakfast at the elementary level, we're actually at a 4% increase. We did implement breakfast in the classroom, which is BIC, at the entire school at Sheraton Hills, and then partially at RDLS. So those two schools are bringing the elementary breakfast numbers up because of the breakfast in the classroom. And the secondary is very close now. At the point in time that I did the PowerPoint, it was like two percentage points behind, and it's very close to being right even right now. So I believe that we'll finish the school year slightly above last year, even with the snow days. And then at lunch at the elementary schools, and remember, we have our new implementation of our alternate meal procedure, which we knew was going to have an impact on our lunch meal service, and you know, it has so far, but it's been minimal, and again, the snow days. So it's like, we're just 1.5% below at this point in time, and the secondary schools, the middle school and the high school, and also RCEP, are plus 6%. And the main cause of that is really the three-period lunch schedule at the high school, that we're able to service more kids every single day at the high school, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, much quicker. So the overall average daily participation for the district right now at breakfast is 46.7, and at lunch it's 65.1. And then I just put down how many snacks we've served so far at Centennial, and then the year-to-date free and reduced, 64.3. So as far as program improvements at breakfast, again, I talked about the breakfast in the classroom, Sheraton Hills and RDLS. We have a mobile breakfast kiosk at the middle school and added one additional kiosk to STEM, and we actually added two here at the high school. We had one last year, and now we have three. And then just serving the VPK programs with breakfast at all sites and lunch only at Centennial. And then at lunch, we implemented our new build-your-own-salad entree serving line, which we'll see pictures of in a minute, that also helps support the seven-period day and three-lunch periods. And then we implemented a new cold alternate line and competitive foods line at the middle school to again flow some traffic and also some students by having another serving line, so we didn't just have the two long lines compressing in the middle there at the middle school. We'll talk more about that when we see the pictures. Some of the quality improvements, just as far as purchasing all the new mobile equipment, all of the equipment at the high school, serving area, if you've been in there recently, that's all new, thanks to our farm-to-school partnerships and grants with the Department of Agriculture. And you know, the reason that we, you know, chose the neutral color scheme and the mobility is so that we can take that with us wherever, with any other planning at the high school and still use all of that great equipment. And then again, we talked about the middle school and we purchased there. We also have a partnership and did a Midwest Dairy Council grant for the breakfast in the classroom implementation at RDLS and Sheraton Hills, and we'll see a picture of that and how they support the initiative of our breakfast in the classroom. I just want to say, the three lunch periods at the high school have really changed how long it takes to get lunch at the high school, and we're, we as a team are really excited about that change, so that the students at the high school can A, make the good choice to eat lunch with us, and B, have much more time to consume their lunch, all their food that they select and fresh fruits and vegetables. And the digital menu signage at the middle school has also helped when students are standing in line to be able to make a decision before getting up to the line, they kind of know what they want, or if they want to go to the cold area and get entree salad or wrap, so that's also helped. Alright, so the build-your-own-salad bar at any given day also gives us the ability to focus on a lot of local farm-to-school products, which is really great. And we, next year, one of our goals is to do a better job of making sure that we have them all labeled specifically and where they came from, which local partner they came from. So just a couple pictures of that. This is the RMS, the new part of it, in a little snapshot here, but the new cold lunch options, and just making sure that we're marketing those options so that all students know that they can avail themselves to those choices every single day. The entree salad changes up, but you know, certainly there's a variety of wraps and cold sandwiches, whereas there used to be just two choices, like turkey and cheese and peanut butter and jelly. So they're catching on to it. Just a note about the middle school again, that we, I am working in partnership with the Smarter Lunchroom folks from Cornell University, and we've already worked with them and done a lot of work around their strategies for a number of years here in Richfield schools, even before my time, by having fresh fruit and vegetables first in the serving line and things like that, having the white milk first and all the milk coolers and subtle things. But now I'm working with them because they have a joint partnership with Target Corporation right here in the Twin Cities, so they reached out to me about the possibility of partnering with Richfield Schools. And one of the things that I proposed to them, because I would like STEM cafeteria to look like the middle school cafeteria with the window clings on their windows and all of the branding that we've done there with the fresh fruit and vegetables. I just think it creates such a great environment. So we're partnering with them. We've already implemented, if you flip the fuel your life, your body, your life and your mind, so those are already part of the STEM serving lines, they're first thing that you see when you walk in, to keep the same messaging going from grade level to grade level for all the students. Again, we talked about the Midwest Dairy Council grant. This is some of the equipment that was purchased, not the kiosk itself, but the milk cooler was purchased to support breakfast in the classroom, and all of the bins, all of the thermal coolers that actually go right into the classroom, so just wanted to show you all that. During our staff development day with our entire team, we were at the middle school location, and we were focusing on new recipe development and just trying out new recipes that were supporting our Meatless Monday menu strategy, which we've implemented this year at the elementary level and plan to take that to all grade levels in the fall of 2018. So we made such things, I had the question, like what do, you know, what type of items? Like Mediterranean flatbread would be one example, which you know, is similar to Mediterranean pizza with hummus and tomatoes, and it's customizable. So you'd have a number of different fresh vegetables that you could or could not add to it if you wanted to. Also, there was like a nutty noodle bowl that could be made with either nut or seed butter, that was, we tried a veggie lo mein that was excellent, roasted chickpeas, two-bean chili with kidney and black beans. So we are excited about all of our new recipes, and we'll rule them out, not all at the same time. Our goal is just to have one featured recipe per month for our fall menu cycle. Just an update on the negative lunch account balance procedures. And we all know, we have a new procedure that we put into place on July 1st of last year. And you know, this has been such a great team story and team effort here at Richfield Schools, and it's the lowest that I've ever seen. So I feel really good about the procedure itself and that it was a good decision for everyone. It was a good decision for the students we serve and the families, and it was also a good sustainable procedure for the future. The current negative balances are just 9,805, and just as a team from when I first got here, that's like a 75% improvement over the course of three years. So it's a big game changer. The Sunshine Fund, there have been both parents, private individuals, as well as a few church, area churches, give donations to the Sunshine Fund, which anybody can do online. You don't have to have children in school, you don't have to have a certain, you can create a fee-pay account and donate online to a specific school or to any school. So it works out really well, and we answer questions all the time. And Courtney, my assistant, it takes her probably two or three minutes to explain to whoever's calling, she just walks them through it, they're at their computer, she's at her computer, on how to do it and how to donate. And so far, we've, the total amount that have come into the Sunshine Fund is 4,239.59, and it's all been allocated out, and it's been allocated out again as a team approach. And our priority is always, and has always been, to first look at each school site and look at any students who now qualify for free and reduced-priced meals but didn't previously and have a negative account balance. And we work with the teams there, the administration, the guidance counselor, the outreach workers to try to really understand the story and their recommendations if we do get Sunshine Fund donations. And just as a side note, the middle school had a short little GoFundMe campaign, and that $1,500 is included in the 4,239 total. So the USDA has a meal price calculator, that tool that they've had for a long time, and the real purpose behind the calculator is to ensure that families who do not qualify for free or reduced-priced meals, their meal prices not being supplemented by the USDA meal reimbursement that's being driven into schools by the free and reduced-priced meal reimbursement per year. So that's the methodology behind it. And RPS has not increased meal prices for over three years, because we've been focusing on increasing our participation at every level with a high focus on our universal free breakfast, which is free to all students regardless of your eligibility, and then improving our nutritional offerings for all meals. But there have been a number of increased costs associated with the new meal patterns with the additional servings of fruits and vegetables that are required at every grade level for the new meal patterns. And the average cost of a fresh fruit and vegetable serving is right around 27 or 28 cents, but it can obviously go much higher. It doesn't often go much lower, so for fresh fruits and vegetables. So the proposal would be, after completing the calculator, that we would increase meal prices for full-paid students by 10 cents over what they are this year. So that would make elementary lunch 260, secondary lunch 285. Milk would go up by 10 cents to 60 cents if you purchase it à la carte. There's no additional for milk with a reimbursable meal. And an adult lunch would go up by 10 cents to 385, and then visitors or any guest would be 385, and then the adult breakfast, because breakfast is free for all students, the adult breakfast would go up as well by 10 cents to 210. And then just looking ahead again to 1819, it's the continued expansion of our build-your-own-salad line with new specialty salad recipes and incorporating different lettuce types and a variety of, we might do some customizable bowls off of that line, like every Wednesday, for example, so it wouldn't confuse all of the students. But I did want to say that previous to the build-your-own-salad line, we typically with the just entree salads that were all pre-made, we would only make between like 30 and 40 salads a day, and that line typically is right around 200 participants per day. So it's been an exciting change and an exciting increase in a really great option. We talked about the Smarter Lunchroom grant partnership already in the Meatless Mondays. We have the opportunity with the new NOI is net-off-of-invoice, and that is part of, Minnesota was one of the only states in the country that was not doing food distribution net-off invoice. We had a different pilot program going on for 15 years. So this year, we, the net-off invoice, our district was included in a pilot program, so I've been doing it with two different manufacturers for two years now, and it's really great, because the minute, the minute we order the items from these particular manufacturers, we get the discount off of them at the time we order them. Minnesota used to have a rebate program, so that we used to have to wait till our distributor uploaded the information to the state, and then we used to have to go review the information, release the claim. So the payment was way behind when you had ordered the items. So we're excited about the net-off invoice commodity system, and that as well should avail it, our district, to be able to purchase, again, cleaner label and higher-quality items to serve at lunch, for example, a number of items with 100% mozzarella cheese. So then we're involved in the planning for the RHS kitchen and cafeteria remodel and future space options, looking out into the future, and very excited about that. And the possibility of doing, you know, even more of a scatter-type system to again speed up our service for the students during their hectic lunchtime.
Thanks. I think you're finishing up, right?
Yeah.
I just want to highlight a couple things. On the meal prices, the 10 cent is the minimum that we can do under those type of guidelines. So we can continue to try to push on that participation in making sure that the food is available to all of our kids, and those are only just for those fully-paid meals that are associated with that. In Minnesota, anybody who's qualifying for free or reduced lunch qualifies for a free lunch, and we also are operating as the board that approved a number of years ago that free breakfast option. Obviously Pam's very passionate about the work that she's doing, and one of the things I think is really exciting is she's built that enthusiasm across the rest of her team. And I think one of the things that I've seen change since Pam's been here is, we don't consider food service just a service, it is part of our educational program. And Pam's passion for making sure our kids are fed, that they have nutrition, knowing that if they have that food in their bodies, they're going to be learning at a higher level, and that's what I see the work that she's doing, is really that's that belief. It's not just, how many meals do we serve and how many, you know, tickets do we punch? It's really that work. And I think with some of the presentation stuff, one of the things you can see is, prior to Pam's background in food service or nutrition services in schools, she had some experience working at Dayton's Marketplace and things like that. So that concept of presentation being a critical component to what kind of makes that whole experience a positive thing is something that I know she strives for in her buildings and programs as well. So just to kind of highlight a couple of those pieces and summarize some of that work, about this work is integral, we believe, to the work we do as a school. So with that, I think we have access to questions.
I just have a comment. I also really like building on the, on the educational component, having that Meatless Mondays and then educating students about other protein options, I think it's a really great thing, that you're teaching them different ways to eat. And I have heard a lot of positive feedback about the salad line and the fact that you can have a salad with chicken, but you don't have to have the chicken. So I think having all those options of what to choose and not makes a big difference.
Working with our school liaisons and the police department. So, a lot of work has gone into the guidelines. If you take a look at 970, there's not a lot of changes in 977, but 977.1. Making sure that we're clear that principals make the final determination, but we wanted to clarify that they weren't making that in a vacuum. So, prior to making the decision to allow an interview with a student, that would require consultation with superintendent, assistant superintendent, or chief human resource administrative officer. Also clarifying that language, that we are documenting anything that occurs and that we are attempting to contact parents immediately in any and all of these particular situations. Then also on page three, the board asked us to look at some of the languages some of the other districts are putting in. And so, we did do some of that, and so that language you will find in there today. As we have continued, I would also suggest, we're trying to, if you look at C, the original C that has been struck down, that the interview, if it shall take place with a warrant. One of the things we are trying to balance is that if police have a warrant, that is not our ability to intervene in that process. And so, we were trying to note that and figure out that piece. So, one of the things we were looking to add, back and forth with board member is an E, and that may become a friendly amendment, but if the officers are not able to comply with the parent or guardian's response, and that is if the parent guardian does not want their student to be interviewed, adding language that specifically says that if there is a warrant present, basically due to a legal warrant. So, it would then read, "If the officers are not able to comply with the parent guardian's response due to a legal warrant, the administrator will notify the parent guardian that the interview is occurring against the parent guardian's desires." So, Beth would then add E right after the comma, "response due to a legal warrant." And I think that satisfies the last board question in regard to that. And that would then wrap up 977.1. And then also 977.2, which lays out risk levels where we added as assigned and defined by the Minnesota Department of Corrections experts. We don't define what the risk levels of people in the community are, but there are very clear definitions put out by the Department of Corrections.
I have a couple more questions on 977.1. It seems like every time I read it, I find something different that pops in my mind. So, you've suggested we would add language that would cover, you know, the seriousness of a defense if there was a warrant present, for example. I assume the belief that there was imminent harm to self or others would qualify as a reason why the wishes of the parent couldn't be adhered to? Or perhaps not? I don't know, right? I'm just, so, within that, it suggests that the administrator present will be neutral or not participate in the interview. But if the parents request that the interview not take place, does the administrator say that to the student? Does the administrator advise the student that your parents do not believe this should take place? Do they further advise the student? They do not have to speak.
So, in C, if you notice, in the presence of the student and the officer, the principal will notify the student of the parent guardian's response. The principal will also notify the student that he or she does not have to speak to the officer if he doesn't wish to, or he or she doesn't wish to do so. And then, at this time, the principal or designee will also consult with the superintendent, assistant super-designee, so that we can help guide or advise in that case.
I just think that while there's a gap in participating, you know, we don't want the administrator to participate in the interview, the reminder, the periodic reminder by the administrator that the student does not have to participate, I think would be something our district could do for its students in terms of advocacy, right? Especially if it's following through when the parent has requested it not to continue or it's against their wishes and is still continuing anyway for some reason. That someone is there to, in what I imagine is a stressful situation, to remind the student that, you know, you don't have to do this. So, if there was something--
Is there a place beyond C that you would see, we suggest we add that multiple times to the guideline?
Yeah. No, no, I just come up with, I don't solve problems, Steve.
I do, I would hope that because it's in the guidelines once, that does mean that it could be shared at multiple points in the process. Is that a fair way to interpret? Okay.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, and if that's what is understood, I just worry that someone would read it that the, where does it say? You know, that he or she would not take part in the questioning and the administrator shall at all times remain neutral observers down in H. That that doesn't prevent the administrator from, you know, and neutral observation is, includes, you know, being a neutral observer includes reminding the student that they do not have to participate.
I agree. And appreciate all of the changes that have been made. I do think that coming to this multiple times now has made it a stronger and clearer policy. And the note that Steve recommended adding into what is the corrected version E around if the officers are not able to comply with the parent or guardian's response was the last thing that was giving me some pause because it concerned me that a parent or guardian might say, "We do not want our child to participate," but we would still allow that to go forward. So, I think adding in that it would be going forward because there is actually that formal warrant addresses for me the concern that that parent or guardian's wish would somehow potentially not be followed by us as a district. So, I appreciate that change if other board members are comfortable amending that to this policy.
I am.
Yeah.
So, if there aren't, I'm just looking, okay. With that correction being made, I would move this policy for approval. Policy and administrative guidelines, to be precise.
I will second the motion. I appreciate as well that, you know, we've been focusing on 77.1, but I appreciate as well the change to 977.2, which I think does a nice job of adding some more direction for those fuzzy level two areas.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Ms. Doherty. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and policy 977 and guidelines passes. I would also quickly add, it was really nice to have the MSBA policies in there to look through and all of that. It made this whole process pretty smooth. So, we will move on to board policy review, 979, 979.1, 979.2, community use of schools.
All right. And then, similar to our first policy, 505, I do not anticipate asking the board to move this one forward. There is a lot of changes as we continue to work our way through, and as we continue to work our way through this, we continue to learn more about things that have happened, that haven't happened, and trying to figure out how to align our policies to our actual practices. So, we continue to try to create a policy that sets out how do we use our fields, how do we prioritize the use of fields, how do we charge for those pieces, and how do we create, again, a policy that aligns to our practices. Some of the new learnings has to do with, some groups have been charged as a practice, some groups haven't been charged as a practice. There hasn't been necessarily the same level of implementation across the entire policy because of a lack of clarity. There's also things that we've learned in regard to city use of fields versus school district use of fields, some city maintenance of fields. Some city at one time had actually maintained our fields. That was contained in the policy that actually hasn't happened for, I believe, around 10 years, or a significant period of time. And so, there are different charges currently for people going through the city and for people going through the district. And so, again, we continue to work our way through this to try to understand policy, practice, and the implications of each of those pieces. There was a set of clarifications added here, trying to organize. And we're going to come back at our next meeting with a more clean copy because with all the changes and all the red underline, it's hard to now follow at this point. Basically, we start by talking about permits and how they are organized, and then just sort of the groups who are, the groups who are permitted to use our facilities in category order, order of priority based on the fields, and based on how we share out our space. We talk about permits, how we get permits, permits being required, and the approval process, and also charges. And then, it is followed up by how do we charge, and how do we charge based on category for each of those particular groups. We also point out as far as supervision. That is another thing we've learned that has happened at times, that hasn't happened at times, and what we want to make sure that we do is that when we are supervised, we have people who are highly trained in the customer service components. One of the things we talk about quite often at the board is how do we make sure that when we are supervising, we have things with those who are ready to supervise and interact with the public to put our best foot forward. And so, we're trying to figure out exactly what level of supervision is needed at each of these particular levels, and how do we allocate that in a most appropriate way. And then, finally, we move on to some of the other logistics around use of equipment, and also insurance, limitations of use, and then what do we do in terms of conflict, and how do we apply. Quite a few changes and clarifications as we continue to work our way through. Rather than go after each of the board members' questions, I'm going to have people ask questions of things so that we can look at what we need to go add further. Mr. Holzke?
Can I just jump in on a couple pieces? So, this whole project really started as an effort to identify clarity, consistency, and kind of just making sure that information's out there, and aligning what we have in place written down is aligned with what we're actually doing. So, that's kind of where this started. And as Mr. Janowski said, we kind of, as we kept unpeeling, peeling the onion, we kept finding more and more layers of things where some people were signing up for fields, some people weren't. We didn't know necessarily who was on fields. We ended up with field conflicts and things like that. So, just that consistency, so as people are coming, they know what to expect. And there were those surprises there. Couple rumors that have kind of started to filter out along those lines of this is really kind of identifying what we're doing. There are rumors that now everybody's going to have to have a supervisor assigned to them and assigned to their group. That is not true. It is based on need, it's based on kind of what those areas are. If we have people in our buildings, we have requirements to have people who have done the boiler checks and things like that. So, we have some requirements that are different if it's onsite in a physical building piece compared to where it is if it's on a field, where it's more of an open space, where there's that access that's associated with that. The board, a number of years ago, when we installed the turf, had identified a need to have a supervisor in that stadium field at every time. So, that's one of the pieces that's aligned where those are one of the times that we are requiring that because that was something the board had indicated they wanted. And that's where part of that supervisory piece comes into place. We've also seen some of our programs where we have, you know, hundreds of people here for dance recitals or things like that, where people are coming expecting some event supervision and oversight and kind of service, that those are the sorts of events where we are hiring individuals who are supervising that, and those are getting charged to that. It's not for regular practices or things like that, that are especially on the outside facilities and things like that. So, and then, as Steve talked about, just kind of aligning what is our partnership with the city. We have, our guidelines point two, which say the city maintains our fields during the summer and schedules those fields. Our city schedules and maintains the fields after 5:30. That hasn't been happening for a number of years, and so, those are just kind of parts of that program. The other thing that's in there, it indicates that if a request for a field use, kind of that outside ground area comes to the school district, we are supposed to refer that group to the city as a first, and if city fields are available, that's where they're supposed to be going first. I think between the field use and kind of the increased use of things like soccer fields and things like that, we're seeing that there are fields that are city fields, that are seeing increased wear, that we're now working in partnership with the city to make sure we're identifying kind of how those fields are used, to make sure that they're not wearing down, and we're not using these same fields all the time, that those are kind of getting mitigated with causes of concerns where they're not maintained as we want them to be. So, those are just kind of some of the other things that we've been talking about. We had a meeting, Dave Bowie, Shannon Lindberg, and I had a meeting with Jim Topitzhoffer and Nick from the city, who does those scheduling, just to kind of figure out, are there ways that we can kind of transition in a different way, or kind of making sure that we continue to operate in some cohesive fashion so that we're partnering together, so it's not kind of playing one side off another and doing those sorts of things, but creating equity? So, each association has similar expectations and/or if there are reasons to do things differently, that we're mitigating those. And so, Dave has reached out to all of those, especially in kind of, that are using our fields, to have a discussion with their leadership, to figure out how to kind of make this real and kind of develop that consistency across the board while at the same time making sure that we're encouraging participation of our rich field youth in our programming, that they have that connection to the school and aren't kind of being deterred from the opportunities for physical health as well. So, just some highlights as part of that work.
Questions?
I have several. If someone else wants to go, I can wait.
I have probably more brief, so I'll go first. I think to what you were just addressing, I wonder if it would help to put in that first administrative guideline that is very detailed, a section that defines the distinction between indoor and outdoor slash field usage, because it seems like that is a really significant and important distinction as it relates to charges and expectations for people that want to use our fields and facilities. So, as you were talking, I wondered if that would be a helpful addition to this in the next go-round, because I don't see that in there right now.
So, a question for you, his number, the first guidelines are about the facilities, but they also happen to include references to--
Well, and that is, that is related to my second point, actually.
And guideline two, this has to do with grounds. And again, we kind of brought this as far as, here's some of the changes. The facilities was kind of the fee-based piece because that's what our facilities office drives to on the fee base and those components. So, another opportunity might be to look at how do we combine those?
That was one of the things that I sent in advance to the superintendent, is I didn't understand the distinction between one and two because there's overlap across the two. So, I think streamlining it into one that is clear and all-encompassing feels like it would really help with this drive to be more precise and specific about how this is--
Streamlining, I think we can do. Clarity might be a little challenging.
We're going to keep pushing. We'll keep pushing forward.
And I'd say one of the things too, and this is kind of where we, because there's so many different parts of our organization that are governed by this, because we have auditorium use, we have association use, you know, and every situation of how our facilities are being used is complex. And so, kind of, and across the board, here's what it goes for everybody is the challenge. And so, that's where some of this latitude is requested to be a part of this, so that we have that administrative discretion to make those determinations when things are made. But we also want to make sure that people know what it is and why it's happening the way it is, and making sure that we're fulfilling board's guidelines of participation and encouraging that work.
I think it's important that when people go to look if they want to utilize it, that they can figure out what the expectations are. I know I struggle to figure out what the expectations might be, so I think that, that kind of thing would be helpful, kind of the same type of thing.
Can we think of some big areas that have been used so far? So, to kind of ascertain the demand, I guess? Because if we think of a policy that, for like indoor spaces and then outdoor, or sports-related, or community, I mean, that type of thing, that, because I think when we leave room for the decisions to be made internally, that's what can lead to arguments about lack of equity.
Misconceptions.
Right. Does that make sense? Like, I know that the policy is not supposed to be like, you know, it's not about implementation, however, because we are, we discussing it to avoid the misconception that we are taking, making different things. So, then, I think in this case, I think it makes sense to actually be more specific about how we go about, you know, the sports-related with the school, how we go about spaces for other people that want to do religious things on weekends and that kind of thing.
And that would be in the guidelines, right? In that part of the policy?
Yes.
So, someone did send me a couple of other district policies that, if you want, I can send. I don't know if you guys have already looked at other ones to see examples of, and it may be different, but it might be, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel--
I know Shannon has looked at a lot of them out there, and she's a part of an association that talks about, you know, what are different schools doing with their associations, how, you know, what are gym rental costs, what are auditorium costs, things like that. So, that's where, you know, we're gathering some information that way, but if people have things that they think have some good examples, we're open to that.
And not for cost, but just for how they organize their--
Right.
Yep. So, the one, you know, the one thing that I would say is, you know, there are things where that latitude is left to the administration. So, insurance is one of those requirements that, it's hard to say, yes, everybody has to have that certificate of insurance because we need that in many situations, and we need to have a blanket statement that requires it. But sometimes, we have groups that just can't afford to do it, and it's a small enough situation where we determine our risk is minimal for those situations, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. When we're making administrative decisions on that, we're trying to create, trying to figure out how do we have the greatest access to our facilities with our spaces while at the same time not putting ourselves at undue liability, and having, you know, an accident that occurs, that all of a sudden, we have, you know, a $25,000 claim that's going on our insurance because of something that we didn't have supervision for, and somebody was expected to be maintaining that on their own. So, those are the, it's hard to have a guideline for every situation because every year I see new things come through, but it usually goes up to either Steve or myself when it comes to kind of those exceptions.
Are we good? All right. Thanks. So, I just wanted to ask, so with all the updates on the grid and the charges, have we, can we at least confirm that it matches, or have we been able to confirm that it matches what categories one, two, and three are current, is currently happening?
It is, the one, two, and three, those are things that move through, and you can track and see where things were previously. It gets, where some of the challenges were, so the indoor pool, for example, you can see there's just kind of one rate for everybody, and it's listed going down instead of nonprofit versus one of those categories. So, those are some of the things that we've worked on. The categories are as the board approve them. As Steve kind of mentioned, there were some groups that were either not scheduling field space, or some groups that were going through the city, and then the city was scheduling, where they were obtaining free rates. And so, those are some of the changes that we're looking at is, because of the complexity of the scheduling and wanting to have some local control over who's on our fields and knowing that, we're also finding that the service delivery model is better than always going through a second person. So, the guidelines are consistent with what they've been previously. The application of that is what is creating some differences at this point.
Okay.
And that's what we're continuing to work with the associations to identify.
Okay. It's just, it's, as long as we continue to work through it from a mindset of we're not looking to really change what they're currently paying, you know, if the groups have been paying whatever it is per use, that it's not, just because this was, this document was put into place and not necessarily utilized in the past, doesn't mean it's going to be implemented and enforced, like, for, you know, dollars per hour kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay. I'm jumping all over because you made me look at 979.2, and the mention that the city historically, you know, you struck out the part where the city would assign the fields after 5:30 PM during the school year, but they do that. Right? So, the baseball program is told they can use Sheridan Hills and Centennial and STEM, and what we call now RDLS, perhaps the board should call that field RDLS as well, the one right behind RDLS. You know, we get assigned that certain days by the city, and so, it's interesting that we would now be going through the school for that. Is that--
Correct.
Okay.
And that is a recommendation as we've worked with the city because of that challenge of the communication of, you know, and kind of the service piece.
Right. So, understanding, right? So, you need to know if it's open or not, and if it isn't, you know, if you happen to have a fun day that goes out there and extends.
Yep.
Okay. Someone had asked about the, someone had asked me about the definition of a rich field group, and so, for example, the baseball program is outside the 75%. We perhaps should qualify within category two, right? We have youth athletic organizations as recommended by athletic director and approved by superintendent feeder programs. You know, if, what are, what are the methods by which a program that is not compliant with that 75% qualifies? Is it based on number of students or recommendation of the athletic director? Or number of students, number of residents, I should say. In the, you know, in the event that, you know, it's not just baseball, but any of the groups could have some sort of splinter organization pop up and claim they're a higher percent, they should be the one. Okay. Because the city actually doesn't abide by that. The city really doesn't want to deal with multiple organizations from the same sport. They tell you to sort it out, and only one of them will get the premier assignments of fields. So, if you want to know how they do it, that's, then their advice.
So, they hold to the 75%?
No, well--
That's the number that we got from the city.
That's not, that's not what the number they use for the rich field, the RRYAO, so that's youth athletic organizations. That's the number they use for like facility rental in general, like if you want to rent a park or a pavilion, that's the number they use if you're an outside entity that wants to rent, and you want to claim yourself as a resident group, and that's the number they use if you want to claim that your softball team is, or dodgeball team is resident or not. But that's not the number they enforce on the youth athletic organizations. They want it to be 75, but because of history, specifically the baseball program's not there yet. So, they manage, I don't know, 55 maybe? Maybe 60? So, it's within, within the youth orgs, that's the number that comes out. Now, most of the other ones crush that number, but baseball doesn't, so.
Well, it's the distinction between the formal, like, formal organizations that are rich field--
Correct.
--athletic versus the sort of ad hoc things that could--
Yeah, that's fair. That's fair.
Right?
Right. So--
So, for example, we have a number of AAU teams, which are, you know, one or two team groups--
Yes.
--that aren't qualifying for that category two, but if they have the participation, they qualify for category three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, there's something in here, there are some of the groups, for example, when they use, like, I'm thinking of baseball again. We may want to, we may want to put in there, or at least have the flexibility to suggest that there is some field upkeep required of the renter. Something like, I know baseball, for example, will, the team will work to maintain the field afterwards, and I believe softball, fast pitch does the same. They do a lot of work to maintain the fields, other than mowing, right? And they, you know, might pay for portable toilets, things like that, you know, raking, you know. So, we may want to include that, and may want to understand that as we, as we set these rates and think there's more, like, these organizations do, in some instances, do a lot of the work to help, you know, reset the field so that buildings and grounds does not come up and have to reset, you know, the ag lime in fields and things like that, or do all the edging and whatnot. In the section where we have the excessive trash and the $50 charge, I would say we should broaden that. If, to allow that if the facility is left in a state of general disarray that requires time and energy to reset it, to restore it, that we would charge them the maximum of $50 or some equivalent of the actual time spent. If someone comes in and just leaves the place a mess, I'd hate to think we'd only get $50 out of it. If someone came in and left trash all over, or chewed up a field, or did other things. I know there's other places where we mention damage, you know, but, you know, someone could leave a real mess of the place.
So, you're looking at page six, line five, G. Events that have excessive trash will be assessed a trash removal fee of--
Yes.
$50.
Yeah, I would--
And then, something about other--
Something about excessive trash or other, you know, state of, what are, there's better words for it than what I'm coming up with, I'm sure, but a general state of disarray that requires staff effort to clean up and restore it to that, so that it could be rented or used again. We don't want our renters leaving it worse than what they found it. Or certainly not within reason, you know? And since we only say trash, there are other things that could be done that aren't trash.
I think the intent was consistent with that. So, line F, as far as rich field employees who are assigned for that specific work--
Yeah.
--if there's custodian times that are required as part of that, those groups are being charged for the actual time with a baseline of here's what the general expectation is. So, it falls under the custodial time in section F, right above that, but we can work to clarify that, and it may be on--
I view, I view F as being communicated in advance that you will be assigned, if it's, so if we're allowing that F could be, you know, because that's communicated on your approved permit, so it's before the event has happened. If we're allowing F to expand, to allow us to assess it after the fact and assign that time back to you, I'm okay with that.
So, you're suggesting maybe to add a line, additional time incurred for cleaning will be paid for or charged to the group, you know, for the actual time or something like that?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
And, let's see--
If that's cleaning, you may want to repair, I mean, if they damaged the field or stands or something.
Correct. Right. I mean, right. So, if the baseball program, you know, just totally tore up the mound and left, did nothing, nothing to it, that would be a lot more than 50 bucks.
Yeah.
Right? Right?
Okay.
Bless you.
Let me think. We, let's see, we talked about, right, we talked about the upkeep, the excessive trash. Oh, I just, I've never seen the, the require, our, our insurance requirement of an A rating.
Yeah.
And so how do we, how do we check on that and make sure? I know, I checked that, that the program I work on has an A rating by chance, but, and that, you know, if it was A minus, it wouldn't have stopped us from purchasing it, you know, unless our, our facility partner had told us that that's a deal breaker, right? So the extent to which we communicate that outward, because my guess is that literally no one on these groups pays attention to the rating of their insurer. And if you're asking them to start, that's fine, is you'd have to communicate that well in advance.
And that's listed just as it's been consistently.
Yeah.
And that shows up on the permit information as well.
Okay. And let's see. Oh, that is just a timing and impact, you know, just to make sure that we're clear that when, when this is implemented, we're, you know, it's hard because when we enact a policy or a guideline, usually it's immediately, that's, that's the new rule. But we have organizations that are currently in use of this and they're, they're afraid that if they, if this passed tonight, not that it's not going to, but if it were to pass tonight, that starting tomorrow, they would get charged different amounts than what they're used to. And so I think the current people using the facilities, you know, the spring, the spring and summer sports will use them probably through the end of July.
Yep. So as, as we discussed earlier, one of the things Dave Boyes is doing is he's reaching out to each one of the associations that's being impacted and working through that process and clarifying that definition. Inherently, the policy was intended to go into place effective July 1 with the new date, but if permits are already in place or kind of finishing off that summer season, are things that were certainly amenable to kind of working through that process, so there's an appropriate break on that. And if people have already figured out what their fees are and their charges for their players, they're not left with additional money at that point.
Right.
So, and all of that's going to be part of that conversation, negotiations that Dave Boyes having with those teams.
And the last and tiniest comment is that on 979.2, page three, line four and five, the user fee, fees can be found on page four of Administrative Guideline 979.1. I would eliminate the part, I would just say can be found in Administrative Guideline 979.1. We don't need to reference the page number.
And if we build them together, they're part of the same policy, they're the same guideline.
So, you know, it's just an unnecessary level of specificity.
Okay.
So I would just add, like through all of this and what you talk about with fees and things like that, so if we make a change, even if we make a change for next year that we're, and you said that Dave Boyes already reached out to these groups, it gets really important to remember that we should be partnering with Richfield Youth Organizations. They become our junior varsity, middle school, high school teams. Their parents are our elementary school parents. So we should, this is potentially a great opportunity to partner with them and really make them kind of a part of our group too, so.
Yep. And I think, as I've kind of gone through this process, like I said, most of this was just, let's carry the numbers over so it hopefully made more clarity and stuff like that. But then also kind of the question, this might be some board determination of, we have some associations because they use gym space, have a $10 fee per day. Is that appropriate that one association does and another association doesn't? You know, and what is kind of that equity tied in with that piece and, you know, what are the roles and participation? So that, that's just another thing that, you know, we don't want to limit. We just partnered in with a study on encouraging Richfield Youth Activity and that physical activity study and those certain components. So one of the things that Dave Boye and I were talking about is this whole process has kind of reinitiated our conversations with the city on how do we partner together with this work and kind of develop that consistency. There's some associations that their only fields are accessible on school property, others that can access mostly city property. So that's kind of another equity-based piece that we're taking a look at, is how do we kind of mitigate some of those concerns as well? So it's turned out to be a lot more complex than just kind of rolling forward and trying to create some clarity. But again, our goal still are continued participation, but developing some consistency and clarity so that we know what those rules are and can apply that across the board and we have that in place.
Yeah. We just, I mean, you know, we want to keep the cost as low as we can. We're not trying to make money, we just don't want to have it be costly to us. So I know someone pointed out that there was a community, a community ed survey asking why minority kids don't participate in any sports and it was the cost was the essentially the limiting factor for those kids. So the more we can do to keep those costs down.
Done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a foreshadow, probably coming back a couple more times because I think Craig got a large, or we have a large list of things to overhaul when we bring it back two weeks from now. And so we will, we'll go to work on making those changes.
So we will move on to new business and district calendar update, 2018, 2019.
So this is a request that we received from the high school when we went through the calendar review, looking at where semester breaks fall was one of the things that got missed as we just kind of rolled the calendar forward. And then as they started to do their planning for next year, they realized that one semester ended up with a lot more days than the, the first semester ended up with more days than the second semester did. So the recommendation here is to move what previously was a high school end of semester day on January 29th up to a high school end of semester day on January 22, right after Martin Luther King Junior Day. It maintains our consistency with wanting to have breaks consistent and together so we just don't have them all over the place. It only affects the high school and their scheduling and their timing on it. And that day is the day that they're using to do end of semester grading and making any class schedule changes that need to take place. So kind of that timeline of that weekend is one of the components that they need to make sure that kids are registered for the correct classes the following semester. So with that, we ask you for your approval. At that point, everything else remains consistent.
So move.
I'll second.
New motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Brocky. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the district calendar update passes. So we will move on to renewal of group health and dental insurance.
Thank you. I'm going to have just some information to share about our health insurance renewals. Highlight, we're recommending no increases to premiums. So this is, I think, the fourth year, the fifth out of six years, I lost track of this, where we've had no increases. So once moved, we moved to self-funded, we had, we held constant on our premiums the first year. We had a 4% increase the second year and every year since then, we have had a 0% increase in premiums. And we've continued to accrue reserve balance in that. And our goal as an associate or as a insurance advisory committee has been to continue to sustain a limited increase or a small increase as much as possible, just so that we have that predictability. And so we anticipate continuing to build some reserve in that way. We do have some recommended plan design changes because one of the things that we are seeing is that while we continue to build reserve, that reserve accrual is starting to reduce. And so just to start to move into that mindset of either plan design changes and/or premium increases are things that we're going to start to take a look at. And we have some things that we think are going to ultimately help our utilization as well in addition to those increases. So taking a look at that and then also no increase in our dental plan rates. So as we move forward, here's just kind of some information that One Digital had shared with the Insurance Advisory Committee back in April. Just to highlight, current year reserves at nine months, after nine months at that point was, we had accrued an additional $785,000 to that point. We have about three months of runout where we see some of that will start to diminish. So it's not just kind of where we're going to end at the end of the year, but our total reserve right now is at $4.7 million. Our plan costs are just over $6 million when we look at kind of those claims and things like that. We had three stop-loss claimants that were over $100,000 and 15 that were over $50,000. So we see some increased participation in some of our higher claims, but it, for those that are actually hitting that top level, those appear to be relatively consistent with what we've seen previously. Actual claims to expected claims for what was predicted is at 91.41%. National claims to maximum claims is at 73%. So one of the things that we do is we get renewal projections from Preferred One, our third-party administrator, and then One Digital also does their own assessment to kind of take a look at different models and what that would look like. So this kind of highlights what our current funding is at. The current reserves are at 4.7 million. The estimated runout that we have after June 30th, we anticipate that we'll have about another half a million dollars of expenditures that are incurred in the next plan year that pull out of that accrual from this year. So our estimated reserve at year-end is predicted to be about $4.2 million by the time all is said and done. Claims are staying the same or premiums are staying the same and assuming similar participation. These are the expected costs that we would see. We're anticipating an increase of 9.1% in expected claims from current year. One of the things that we did last year though is we negotiated a lower expected claims with Preferred One, our third-party administrator, as a way for us to realize a lower aggregate cost. So because we brought those expected claims down, what traditionally was a 25% ag mark, margin was brought down about, I think it was another 5%. So that 9.1% really is closer to about 5% trend, which is similar to what we're seeing in other school districts or government sector for trending medical claims. Maximum claims, 7.6, that's at that 125%. These numbers are what our funding would need to be to hit 25, 30, and 40%, and then what the reserves would be at the end. So we could theoretically be taking reductions of 15% and still hit our reserve target of 40%. But as I said earlier, the Insurance Advisory Committee prefers to not reduce our premium costs and just maintain that consistent with the hope that we can sustain that premium for a longer period of time without then having to turn around and increase it the following year. So it's kind of that long-term thinking is what we moved, did when we moved into this plan and that's continues to be the vision for where we are right now. We did recommend some plan design changes. One of the things Preferred One is a, is owned by Fairview Health Systems and they are part of a more preferred network with Fairview Health Systems. So we worked with them as far as what are some opportunities to increase participation in the Fairview Network because that would theoretically be bringing our claims down in most situations. As a district, we don't want to enforce just a Preferred One network or kind of a Fairview Network, but leave it up to choice for individuals to find their preferred medical care, but provide some opportunities where we, when we have those network discounts, we're able to realize those. So one of the things that we've also seen is that our pharmacy or our prescription co-pays are one of the lowest among our peer groups at $11 and $26. And we have had no increases in those since before I came to the district in 2005, yet prescriptions and pharmacies tend to be one of those things that have increased year after year after year and is one of the driving factors of healthcare claims. So we identified working with Clear Scripts, which is the pharmacy provider and Preferred One, that the Fairview Network Pharmacy, along with Costco and Sam's, have the best discounts and the lowest cost prescriptions as a category. And so the recommendation is to maintain those, co-pays for those preferred networks. And then for those individuals who want to use other networks or you need the 24-hour service that maybe those aren't providing, that there is a separate pharmacy prescription co-pay for that of $13 with $22 as a preferred brand and $44 for the non-formulary, their non-preferred brands. So those are things that have some potential increase for individuals, but we've maintained that option. So if they make the choices that are more effective and more efficient for our plan, they still don't necessarily have any of those increased costs. We took a look a few years ago at kind of the Walgreens and the CVS and the convenience drugstores that are on every corner and looked at what their actual costs of the plan are compared to some of the other networks. And we just saw that there was great variability, but they were always higher in those areas. And so we did some education on trying to inform people about what that convenience of being able to go through a drive-through does and what you're, and in this case now it's kind of what are you willing to pay for that, to have that convenience factor associated with that. And so that increased. And then someplace where we are saving money, saving dollars for our claims and our utilization, but also saving dollars for employees is we identified that there was about a $15,000 difference in bundled services that M Health, University of Minnesota, healthcare providers who are doing joint replacement can provide for individuals compared to those who are choosing some of the other orthopedic care services for joint replacement and things like that. And so the recommendation here is to offer a no deductible to members who are having to have that joint replacement surgery if they go through that bundled service with M Health. Still have the choice, still can go wherever they want, but if they make a choice, that is going to help the plan. If we can save an employee $2,500 but save the plan $12,000, that's kind of a win for both sides, is what that, we were taking a look at from an insurance advisory group. So, so that's information about the health insurance plans. And then dental insurance, our reserve is at $157,000. Performance after eight months, claims to funding is about 95%. Current year reserves, we're accruing another $14,000 so far, total reserves at 172 with about four, over four months of annualized spend associated with those reserves. We don't see a need to increase those claims. This is another one that I think we've had one increase in our dental premiums since I've been here in 2005. And so it's one where we've made one adjustment, but aren't having to do that on an annual basis. One other item that we've done, and there is no cost to the district for this, but offering a supplemental plan where employees can opt into vision care. And so offering that op, that optional vision care program where they pay a premium for that and realize more than what they're paying in savings. So that's an option for individuals who are opting into this plan where they are making the money as a care provider, they're hoping people don't go out and get their prescription eyeglasses or aren't fulfilling and aren't utilizing it. But again, it's just kind of one of those value-added that we're starting to see some other school districts starting to offer as well in that situation. So those are the recommended plan design changes for the health insurance and what those fees would be set at. And so we're asking for board approval for that with open enrollment here starting this month.
I just had one question.
Okay.
Was there any disagreement in the part of the advisory committee or was the recommendation unanimous?
I wasn't, were you there at the meeting?
I was there, yeah. It was unanimous.
Okay.
Right. So the, you know, the, it's, it's been an easy committee in a sense because as Craig had pointed out, it's the sixth year of the program, it's run well every year. And the tremendous benefit that it's provided is that it's been, you know, our healthcare costs have been steady pretty significantly for the last few years, while that's not the experience for the rest of the world. So it really is a testament to the employees and, you know, their, their overall good health and also the good decisions they're making on behalf of the plan. But no, they're, they were excited, they were interested in this. I think they, they worked well with, with Craig and Joel and the team to, to make sure that the, you know, that we didn't go to a very narrow network, that discussion Craig had about, you know, Fairview facilities only, that works great if everyone's willing to only do that, but then you go away and say you're up north and there's not a Fairview clinic and now you're out of network. So there's been some thoughtful work to, to make sure it's, it's a pretty inclusive plan. And, and my sense from that, from that committee is that they're pleased with where it is.
Thank you.
One other item, just for full disclosure, my wife works at Health East, which is now transitioning into Fairview. So with the Insurance Advisory Committee, you know, I disclose that, she's not officially a Fairview employee yet as they're kind of working through their transition, but one of those things just for the board to be aware of, I stepped out of the meeting and didn't attend the last meeting because I wanted them to move forward with any of the recommendations that were moving forward at that point. But, so just another component for the information for the board as well.
Thank you.
Well, with the information that you presented this evening and the recommendation of the advisory committee, I would be willing to move the item as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the renewal of group health and dental insurance is passed. Then we will move on to renewal for LTC and life insurance.
Thank you. Working with One Digital, our benefits consultant, they've negotiated kind of a, well, they've negotiated renewal with our long-term disability and life insurance policies and we're recommending that we can sit, continue with Madison National Life for the period of July 1, 2018, 18 to June 30, 2019. The LTD rate that was proposed and negotiated with Madison National is of 0.38% of insured payroll, is a 20% reduction of our current rate of 0.476 and that we have with Madison National Life. And then with our life insurance rates, it's been reduced to nine cents per thousand dollars from 13, 0.135 cents per thousand dollars of provided coverage for the accidental and the accidental death. Independent life will remain the same at 15 cents and 185 supplement, I'm totally not saying this right. Accidental dependent life and for 15, 0.015 and the supplemental for 1.85 respectively. There's some supplemental changes, changes in the supplemental life plan to avoid some what's called IRS straddling issues where the IRS has set a rate that you can have what's called IRS straddling issues, where the IRS has set a rate that you can have for a premium across the board, and it has to be either to the right or to the left of what those rates are, either higher or lower than it. We had some that kind of bordered on either side of it, and so we brought them all in line with that same area. So that's not something that affects our cost because it's a supplemental program that's employee-paid, but another component of that result, so.
Yeah. I move that we approve as presented. Drop in premium.
Saving premium money is good, I think.
Yeah.
I'll second.
So the motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brockie. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and renewal for life insurance passes. We will move on to termination and non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts.
Good evening. Bringing before you this evening the resolution for your approval for the termination and non-renewal of our teacher contracts for the 2018-19 school year. This is the typical time of year where we do bring non-renewals and terminations forward if there are any in the district, and those can happen for a variety of reasons. So some people might think that it's just performance-based, but it's not. A variety of other reasons, such as teachers coming back from leaves that are continuing contract, teachers that need positions within the school district, can be just section adjustments and things within the schools as well. So we're looking for your approval tonight to do that. We did make a change in the most recent teacher contract, which allows us to extend this period to review teacher contracts through the end of June, through June 30th this year. So this is the first time that we're bringing these forward and asking for your approval.
I have no questions. We'll move the resolution as presented.
I will second.
So with motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus, is there any further discussion?
Just want to say I really don't like this public meeting. And, you know, knowing a few of these teachers, it really breaks my heart, but it's important, you know, that these are really great professionals, and it's just, it's just what we have.
It's important to recognize their dedication and commitment to Richfield throughout this last school year and the students, so we do that and we appreciate their work.
Yeah, disagree. An unavoidable part of public school, running a public school district, and, yep, it doesn't reflect, I mean, we've said it many times, but it does not reflect on the professionalism of these individuals, yep.
Okay, so this is a resolution, so I will call the board. Mr. Paulus.
Aye.
Ms. Brockie.
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing.
Aye.
Ms. Cole.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the resolution passes.
Thank you.
We will move on to Board Policy 114, Website Accessibility.
All right, so as we look to policy that we do need, basically making sure that our website is fully accessible. One of the things that we need to do is have this fully vetted out and completed by July 1. And so we have worked with the Office of Civil Rights to make sure that we do have an ADA compliant and fully accessible website. Things actually, when we did implement our new website on July 1st, became accessible, and then we had to put some quality controls in place to make sure that things are fully accessible to all people. And so if you look at 114, policy itself, that we're committed to accessibility of our website and all content having to be accessible, wanting to make sure also that it is compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and also spell out what would occur if there are complaints in regard to that, so that we could rectify things if there is something that is not according to policy and according to the accessibility that we're looking for. And then also clarifying 114-1 guidelines, so how do we, how do we make sure that our website is accessible, and then also laying out a process for complaints, concerns or grievances, so that we can gather those and be able to respond effectively if our website is not appropriately the way that we have designed it. So those are the two main pieces of 114. This is here for a first read with the hopes of bringing that back in two weeks, and this is work done with the Office of Civil Rights and special ADA advocates to make sure that this is the most appropriate and effective format for our district website to be compliant with accessibility for all.
My only comment is on 114.2, the form, and just the way that it is presented here, it's not clear to me where one would submit this form. If this is online and you just push a button, or if somebody actually wanted to give it to somebody, it's not clear to me who they should give it to.
Okay, so we will clarify that on the grievance form.
Thank you.
Other questions or feedback?
Can I, some of the motivation for this, I believe there was, there was a national movement, wasn't there, that a number of district websites weren't in compliance for...
Visually impaired.
Visually impaired.
Yes, our previous platform actually did not have a text-to-speech function.
Sure.
And our new platform did, and so there is across the nation looking at websites to make sure that they are compliant.
Safe to say that our complaint and grievance form will be compliant?
Oh, yes.
Right, I mean, just...
And this is more than just public schools, our, our program at the University of Minnesota just overhauled our whole website system and all of our online parts of our classes all have to be compliant.
Yes, there's an estimate of a very large percentage of websites across the country are not fully, or have not previously been compliant, and so thankfully, as we did move to that new platform, it does, it does satisfy, and then we need the guideline to complete that. All right, so we'll check on that and bring that back again, making sure to do that revision of the grievance form.
We will move on to lunch prices, 2018-2019.
It looks like lunch turned into white lettering on this board agenda item, so I apologize for that. So as we talked about earlier, there's a recommendation to increase lunch and breakfast prices, or more specifically lunch prices, by 10 cents in each one of the categories for the fully paid meals. Again, as Pam talked about earlier, it's part of a calculation that we're required to do under federal guidelines to make sure that our subsidized lunch programs are not subsidizing our fully paid lunch programs. This is essentially the work that's being done. As Pam talked about, with kind of the offerings that we're required to do, fresh fruits and vegetables and kind of those opportunities, and also providing that full access to basically when people are going through the line, they can take as many vegetables and fruits as they want. Those are some of the program costs that we're seeing that are a part of this. So again, we're trying to keep it as low as possible, so even though the calculations showed a need to increase it as much as, or up to about $2.90, there's a limit on 10s. The board can limit that increase in any year to 10 cents with their own authority, and so that's what we're recommending at this point.
So can I do a quick check for understanding with my entry-level math skills? So for one student who has lunch every day and does not qualify for free or reduced-price lunch, this would roughly be an increase of about $18 a year.
Correct.
Thank you.
He approves.
This is reasonable math, checks out.
It's too quickly in my head.
I thought it was going to be more complicated than I realized when it was 10 cents and I could actually do it.
Decimal points.
I was just curious what it would add up to over the course of a year on a per-student basis, and I just wanted to make sure that I did that correctly.
Applying for math job?
No.
Well, once again, I believe it's a modest increase and in line with our overall goals, I will move that we approve the lunch prices as recommended.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the lunch price, great, is approved, and we will move on to donations.
Sorry, a set of generous acts. Jen Cotsmith Kraus donated $100 to the Richfield High School Random Acts of Kindness Fund for the purchase of bus cards and/or bus tokens. Thank you, Jen Cotsmith Kraus. League of Women Voters donated $210 and a bag of toiletries to the Richfield High School Random Acts of Kindness Fund. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. More donations to the Richfield High School Random Acts of Kindness Fund. $92.34, Bethany Wiseman, $52, Sandra Panachow, and $10, Kristin Shaq. So thank you, Bethany, Sandra, and Kristin. In February, Travelers employee John Rude donated $500 to the Richfield High School Theater Department to be used for lighting. Travelers matched John's donation with an additional $500, so thank you to John and Travelers for that $1,000. And finally, League of Women Voters donated $320 to the Richfield ELC Fund for the Eagle Bluff Trip, so thank you again to the League of Women Voters.
I want that we accept the donations with gratitude. Motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Ms. Cole. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we accept these donations with gratitude. We will move on to advance finding and legislative update.
Can I, don't we need to go back to the...
I believe we have the milk and bread.
Yes, the milk and bread.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
So just...
That's what we're here for.
Yes, the bid award for milk and bread.
Yep, so the bid award was actually done two years ago. We did a four-year bid in partnership with Bloomington Public Schools. We renew this, or we've renewed this, now this is the second renewal that we did. We renewed it last year and we're renewing it again this year. All of the terms were that in which they responded with the RFP last year, and it's consistent with their pricing, so. A lot of the pricing tends to be based off of fees on the commodity level schedule, so it's kind of what the increases are in those areas specifically.
Craig, can I ask, so the, you said the new bid, it compares, I believe it was within the information that it's within what we budgeted, so is there quote truly variable? You said it's like depending on commodity pricing, or are they charging us a fixed amount per unit?
It's variable based on the commodity pricing. It's part of the, I think this is the NJP or National Joint Powers Association bid process as well, so it more is incremental change on some of those areas specifically to that.
Is this, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious why we, why you need our approval to complete this purchase, is this a requirement?
I did a little bit of work, and so different districts handle things differently. We looked at historically, these have been on the consent agenda every year since early 2002. That's kind of where I stopped looking back to see how that played out. Because it's part of a federal program, that's one of the areas that we get more specific oversight, and the auditors generally are going to look to the board to make sure that they made determinations on things like that or are part of those decisions. So that's kind of where the recommendation is. I wasn't able to reach our auditor just to confirm if that's something we have to do every bid award year. Another district that I talked to said that they generally would take the renewals and put them on for board agenda just so that they have that in place as well.
What is the approximate total spend?
I don't have that number with me right now.
But we believe that the rate is comparable to what we're currently...
Yep, it's part of that original RFP as far as what the potential changes were. You can see like single drops commodities are $1.25 per case difference. The milk is consistent with that RFP as far as the pricing associated, what that, what that volume is for the current prices at market level.
I'll move the item as presented.
Second?
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the bid award for milk and bread is approved.
Thank you, thanks.
And now we will move on to, sorry, legislative...
Legislative update. So you have proposed AMSD some changed platform items based on some exciting, some action happening down at the Capitol at the moment. One, the governor proposed a $126 per student, he called it an emergency fund, trying to cover the $100 million deficit that schools are facing. That would actually bring in an extra, and previous to him saying it out loud, unanticipated approximately $725,000 to Richfield Public Schools. So we would, we would be benefited significantly as a school district, obviously, to support the governor in this, in this proposal, and obviously this would be able to benefit our schools, our students, and our district. Similarly, the Pension Stability Fund, which supports closing that gap in pensions, has passed bilateral support. It currently sits in the, I believe, the House Rules Committee, and just needs to continue to move on forward for that, and that was also one of the things we wanted to see on our agenda, and so the state at present looks like they may move that forward, something we are pleased with. It appears that the star rating has become challenged and may not be enacted in regard to schools. Obviously, we had a school ranking system that was not often perceived to be overly successful that was implemented a significant number of years ago, so we were excited and pleased to see that drop off of the current proposal list. And then the other significant piece that I want to bring forward is that there is currently being read tomorrow, possible constitutional amendment in regard to putting a statewide tax towards roads and bridges, which would take, cost of the state general fund by 2026 would go to about $650 million. And so obviously, if a constitutional amendment required funds to be set aside before the pots are divvied out to roads and bridges, those funds would not necessarily be available for education. So something that generally education and education groups are not supporting, so something just to put on people's radar. And that's House File 4437, that was just approved by committee and should be heard tomorrow morning in the Committee on Taxes. The only other policy item that was on my mind from AMSD was, well, I guess, I guess it does look to be likely that we'll see either increased funding for facilities, facility improvements around school safety, or we'll see increased flexibility with how we are able to expend our longer facility maintenance levy dollars, specifically around improvements to school safety. So we, likely we'll see something there. The other piece from a policy perspective is the requirement for academic violence. My understanding is, is that still alive in the Senate, but not necessarily alive in the House. This is something that AMSD opposes, I personally oppose, as being kind of a challenging thing to enforce or even understand the, exactly the mechanism by which that would be carried out, and plus it's already duplicative from a number of other statutes that are in place. So that's what I've got. So anyway, definitely worth contacting legislators with regards to the governor's supplemental budget request. Even if, you know, this is important from, even from a negotiation standpoint, even if the governor's number isn't the final number, there still is a lot, a lot of daylight between the House proposal at least and the governor's proposal, so.
Just another legislative note, I saw yesterday that Linda Slocum announced she's not running again, and so, anyway, she's been a big fan of our district, I believe, and a big supporter of it, so.
Yeah.
Whoever it is who happens to take her place, I hope they will have the same positive view of us that I know she has.
So we will move on to information and questions from the board.
Building off of that last note that you just shared, I wanted to thank Representative Slocum and Representative Ellison and Mayor Elliott for being with us on Monday in the auditorium with all of our 11th and 12th graders, and I also got to be on the stage, and thanks to Tim for, for being there as well, to have a conversation about school safety and about gun violence, and I think there was so much more conversation that could have been had and that we need to continue having, but I think it was a good start. And I, I just really appreciate our elected officials and the school for making that conversation happen, and for the students for saying that that is what they wanted and coming up with some really good thoughtful questions, so I really was glad to be able to be there for that. And then the second thing I was going to share is the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee met for the first time also this week. So that's the group that Mary Clarkson and Christina Gonzalez are convening of staff, students, family members, I'm the school board representative, to really look at our systemic policies and practices across the district. So it was great to get that started. They shared some of what they presented to us at a board meeting now a couple of months ago, sort of as the framework for why this group is coming together and what we are trying to do as a district to make sure that our policies and our practices are equitable and really support a safe and supportive environment for every single one of our students. So it was an exciting start, and that group will be meeting again in August. So just wanted to share that that is underway.
But Crystal, what is the cadence, or the frequency with which that group will be meeting, and...
Yeah, I think it's going to be every couple of months. There are... There are maybe three or four meetings scheduled at this point in time.
Yes, the goal was to increase some student participation, so I believe the team has set up two student meetings to occur prior to the end of the school year, so I think the group is just getting themselves organized to make sure that there is broad representation across the district from all constituencies, and being very flexible to make sure they're getting all voice in.
Yeah, and I want to give them credit because it was obvious that that was very thoughtfully designed in terms of the work that we did at that meeting, and to Steve's point, how they are following up with students, because none of our students ended up attending, so I think that's really leading us to question, how and when should student engagement happen so it does feel comfortable, and so it does feel like something our students want and are able to participate in.
Excellent. And has the committee formally been charged with any particular task in terms of reporting back to the board or making recommendations to the board?
There, can I do, I'll do one thing and then you add on. So one of the things that the group is looking at is policies. So we spent time at that first meeting actually looking at our attendance policy, and from all of these different vantage points, saying, is this clear? Is this accessible? Is this equitable? And so all of the feedback that was generated from that conversation is going to go to a smaller group of staff members who are going to be synthesizing all of it, and ultimately, you know, coming back to us and saying, here are some potential changes to our attendance policy that we would then consider as a board. So I think there is going to be individual policy work, and then there is going to be some of the broader, what are the practices that we are using as a district that may not necessarily come to us for approval, but I think we will be kept informed in terms of how it is all adding up to sort of this systemic approach to safe and supportive schools. Is there anything that you would add or change to that?
You know, I don't think there's much to add. I mean, I think it's from, I would just restate, so there's policies and looking at them to make sure that they are serving all of our students, and all of our community, and all of our families. I mean, and also looking at all the social, emotional, disciplinary-based pieces that would, we would want to align, to have the most safe and supportive schools for all of our students and all of our families, too.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have two things. First of all, commend the school district and the U for hosting a session this past week in Grow Your Own programs with the intent of increasing teacher diversity, and for providing all the information, very clear information about, you know, implications and what it entails and all of that. And then second, I want to bring to the meeting, we received this past week, a few days ago, a letter from the Richfield Social Justice Committee Group, bringing up a few points. So as we think about our future meeting agendas and updates, that I'm interested in hearing is, so the group understands how much we have, you know, we give statistics, they like to, they brought a point that made me curious to hear also, about the day-to-day experiences of our students, and how we see that we are keeping track of reports for either, you know, racial discrimination, bullying, harassment. So I like to have a better idea of how we are keeping track of that and how we're handling that in our schools. Another issue was the lack of affinity groups and support groups for people of color, LGBTQ students. And then finally, the issue of cultural competency training. I'm really, I know we discussed a lot about bringing, making the curriculum more inclusive of different cultures, so as we think of going into next year, I'd like to know, you know, where we are with that, because I think it's really important. I know we are really, working really hard to increase in the diversity of our teaching force, but also, we should also do that with the curriculum. So there's a few things that came to mind about, you know, and I, sometimes things happen, and we receive emails and we communicate, but I think it would be a good opportunity since we have our meetings, you know, host public, and then give more people the opportunity to be part of that conversation.
And also, have you ever seen the letter? It gives me pause to think about how we are communicating, because as I looked at some of the things that were shared, I think about, you know, they talked about their concerns about possible disparity in access to college in the schools and AP classes. And I think about our entire high school transformation, that's been a talking point and a transformation point from the beginning, and so how do we take some of those things, like a 20-plus percent jump in students accessing from diverse backgrounds, from 30% to over 50%, how do we share that in a way beyond our board meetings, so we make sure that we're communicating some of that out? Or, you know, knowing that Director of Literacy and Assistant Superintendent, where you're talking about transformation of curriculum, changing it to add all voices, our work increasing teachers and teachers of color, how do we communicate it beyond the board meetings so the conversation isn't just here? Because being asked questions about things that are frequently presented at the board gives us thought about how do we share those things outside of this particular group, and how do we make sure we are doing some of that communicating beyond, beyond the ways that we're communicating now?
I'm glad you bring that point up, because I saw that, the paragraph about, you know, the AP classes and the honors, so I didn't even bring it up, because I think I have the bias of being here and hearing it often, so we didn't even, you know, so glad you brought that point.
Similarly, you know, you look at innocent classroom, and as we continue to roll out and build capacity, we anticipate all of our staff being trained by the end of next year, and we're looking, as we've talked about, we're looking at gates for a board retreat to make sure our board has that opportunity also. And so many of the things that we do do and that we do talk about here, we do have to continue to find ways and continue to expand our communication, and to make sure that we are sharing it out in ways that are heard and read by our entire community.
And that frankly touches to another point that I, and this is jumping a little bit to future agenda items, I apologize. But certainly, you know, gathering student voice, I do believe that the district has been very intentional about gathering student voice. The Reimagine Richfield exercise obviously was a very intentional moment of student voice gathering. And I, then, this is my future agenda item, I know we've been, we've been seeking, we've been seeking to get feedback on where we're at in that process. I know it's important to me personally that, that we are able to put action to those words and to fulfill that commitment, so I just want to make sure that we're on track, especially, I mean, I understand that Matthew and his peers in the class of 2018 are passing the torch, but at the same time, I want to recognize the leadership that the class of 2018 has brought to this particular initiative, and then make the commitment to you guys that this doesn't end when you graduate.
So we are just in the process of confirming, it's actually on my email now, that the final sort of synthesis work that Paula Forbes is going to be doing is now being tentatively scheduled for May 30th.
Excellent.
To make sure that that occurs, obviously, before the end of the school year, and that should bring together teachers and students through that final synthesis of all the information. We're going to take that information, we've talked about superintendent advisory to, a community meeting to occur, I believe, right after that, that would then set an agenda for things to really be on that topic for an advisory for that next year. And so we are tentatively looking, and I will confirm this completely by our next board meeting, but we are looking at May 30th for that being confirmed, that being set up, which would mean that the board report would be able to come shortly thereafter at our meeting.
Great, thank you.
So then we just have future meeting dates, May 21st, 2018, and June 11th, 2018, and we will move on to suggested and future agenda items.
So I just laid out one, so thank you. One to chalk down. You've had enough, huh?
No, no, I mean, I think I jumped into, like, I just wanted to share that. I'm really hoping that I, I am curious to hear what, what the process is within the high schools about, you know, reporting issues and following up, so that's something that I'm.
So it sounds like, Paula, so here's my, if you don't mind me clarifying. We have, we have had information presented to us from a couple of different sources in the last several months relative to a variety of data gathering practices that look at, if you want to call it a population-wide or building, you know, if we think of our whole population of students, so I'm thinking about the, help me with the acronym, it's the Student Health Survey, that every third-year state.
Minnesota Student.
Minnesota Student Survey, yeah. So that's, that is a mechanism for gathering some understanding of where these issues stand within our population of students. What I'm hearing you ask for, Paula, is a little bit more understanding, at least of what our process and mechanism is for tracking the individual reports that are made, and the resolution of those reports, is that?
Yeah, and the follow-up, because I think sometimes we get lost in numbers, but we're talking about students. And then I know there were a few concerns a few months ago about follow-up when issues were reported, and I know we talked about it, I'd just like to see if we have come up with a way so that some things don't just slip through the cracks, some information. And then there are, and I know we are gathering information, and our students have been publicly speaking and offering feedback, but I just want to make sure that we have a clear, you know, who do you talk to when you have a thing? Because I know we talked about that before.
Yes.
And who is going to get back to you, and so that the students feel that they're being listened to, and that their concerns are being taken seriously, or not.
Yeah, and so what does it look like? Let me just ask this question. What does it look like in your approximation right now when we do that job well? What does that look like? In other words, how do we, how do we measure and define success?
So success will be, students know, there's a point in a, you know, person assigned to this, we are having, keeping some sort of record of it, let's say, by student, I don't know if we have CFS, something. I don't really know what kind of programs we will use, but basically for the students to know, when I have, when I feel discriminated against, when I feel that my voice not being here, who do I talk to as a student? Who is a safe person that I can go talk to? And then that person will be then, you know, checking in, you know, how are you feeling? Do you feel your issue has been resolved? What can we do? That kind of thing.
Okay.
So I will take that guidance, look into it, and figure out the best.
And I didn't go to school here, so this, if I sound like I have not a very good idea, I actually don't. I went to a school, like, very different, as you've known, but, so some of the things, I know what I like to see, I like to see a culture of safety, and where students are informed, and they know who to talk to, and that they know that they're not just saying something, and then that it will be forgotten, that somebody's actually following up, so that then there's that accountability, and for all the students to know, you know, why can I just say whatever I want, because it's actually going to be, you know, some sort of consequence, follow-up, something.
Yep, and I think it dovetails very well with this group that Crystal has just asked.
I had asked before, and I forget, did we get an answer on, we touched on it a moment ago, the rigorous courses, participation. I know we highlighted first semester, did we get second semester? And use of, you know, and, you know, was there a drop-off from first semester to second semester? I don't believe we got that.
Right, I don't believe we have a summary, I think that would be end of year or summer.
Okay, but I mean, you'd think you could compile it now, right? I mean, I know that the semester's almost over, the students are in the classes, so we could count. I mean, it could be the summer, I'm just saying.
Right, the reason I'm pushing for summer is because we'll probably also want to do course pass rates for the second semester.
That's fair.
And add another set of data that comes together, and just trying to balance those presentations.
And if it's, if it's, I don't know the extent to which next, next fall's schedule is created for the high school.
It is significantly along the way.
If we get an update on, are there any new courses that were generated, that were generated either by staff, you know, staff excitement for the topic, or student excitement for the topic?
Okay. So we can definitely have a high school presentation.
Thanks.
If anyone would like to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
That one, yes.
So we're second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.